Ladies and gentlemen, this is the regular meeting of the Scioto Township Zoning Board of Appeal for January 20th, 2022. We're starting the meeting at 7:02 PM. The recording has been activated, Mr. Walsh. So we'll go to the called orders and we'll call. Here, Culberson.
Here.
Ramey.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda unless someone has an addition or change?
So move?
So move what?
The agenda.
The agenda is?
Yes.
Go here, second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Culberson, seconded by Ms. Ramey, to adopt the agenda, please call the roll. Off, yes. Culberson.
Here, yes.
Ramey.
Here, yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields.
Yes.
Okay, people who will be speaking today on the record, could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I solemnly swear I tell the whole truth, the truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Witnesses have been sworn in. Next item on the agenda is communications or correspondence. The only addition we got was this afternoon. I understand the request of Mr. Walsh, just for the PUD setback. PUD setback for the Downs, and we have that together with the PUD approval. Gentlemen, I presume you are here for that agenda item?
Yeah.
Have you seen this? This just came to us this afternoon. I don't think it's of any real merit, but please come up and take a look. What is it exactly?
It was just documenting the setbacks for the PUD, which corresponds to the setbacks.
They just asked for what they are. It was at the request of Mr. Walsh, and he sent over that from the PUD book, plus the motion approving the meeting.
Gotcha, okay. And I do have an email from our HOA approving our plan, too.
Again?
I have an email from our HOA.
Okay, well.
Who approve it if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, we do need to see it, make it part of the record, but we can do that a little bit later. Any other communications or correspondence? Anyone? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the next agenda item. Public comment. Citizens wishing to address the zoning board of appeals on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda, or seek information on any other matters. Such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes to address the board. Are there any persons here wishing to make any public comment? Is there anybody signed in, indicating, a hand raised?
No.
Or any other indication that anyone wishes to speak?
No indication.
Nobody here either, so we'll conclude the public comment, move on to the next item. Public hearings.
Chair, off. Rob Pattinson has his hand up. He's virtual.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
This is Pam Boyd. I'm virtual, and Rob Pattinson has his hand up and has had his hand up. Thank you.
Stand by.
Do you have the participants up? I do. Oh, there you are.
Not yet, stand by, sir.
Yes.
While we're doing this, could you identify yourself, slowly spelling out your name, address, and phone number, please, for the record? Thank you. We have no, there's not the main. He can speak now, can't he?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pattinson, go ahead, we'll reopen the public comment if I inadvertently close it. Well, I can answer part of the question. The five people here are Tom Off, that's myself, Patrick Shields, Ms. Culberson, Ms. Ramey, and Mr. Walsh.
Ramey's up here.
Ramey is in the back.
Trying to figure out the technology.
Mr. Patt-
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Pattinson. We haven't met in person for many, many months, so using a hybrid meeting such as this requires some degree of calmness and trying to figure out how things work. So, Mr. Pattinson, if you have something else to say, please go ahead. Thank you. Oh, piece of cake, that's what it's here for. Is there anybody else who would like to make any public comment on any matters which are not on the agenda tonight? Nothing shown on the screen?
No, nothing shown on the screen.
Ms. Boyd, if you're still listening, maybe you could double check on your screen, see if anyone else has their hand raised?
There are none, and it is just Joe or Rob Pattinson and myself who are virtual that I see on the screen. Thank you.
Yeah, we can confirm that we have that here as well. Thank you. All right, we'll close the public comment then and move to public hearings. The first item on the agenda is variance number 21008, Mark and Karen Haig. Is that correct?
That's right.
By Richard Parr regarding property code number H-08-11-310-002 at 2835 Walters Way. Request for reduction in rear yard setback pursuant to section 36-75, note one of the Scioto Township zoning ordinances. Who will be speaking on behalf of the applicants tonight?
I don't know.
Are you Mr. Parr?
I'm Richard Parr, yes.
Thank you. Let me just give you a brief rundown of how the public hearings work here under our rules of procedure, and with the understanding that we'll have a little bit of leeway in changing the procedure if need be, either on your behalf or on ours. But generally speaking, what we will be doing is we'll call on the petitioner or representative to present statements in support of the appeal, along with any supporting evidence which you may have, after which members of the ZBA will report on any site inspection, any conversations with the petitioner which may have occurred. After that point, members of the public who support the petitioner can speak and correspondence can be read. After that, members of the public who oppose the petitioner speak and correspondence is read. I may, in my discretion as chairperson, permit the petitioner a rebuttal within limits set by myself, but we're not going to be having a time problem here, I don't think. After which, upon a motion of any ZBA member, the hearing will then close, or we will continue this to another time and place, and then after which time the ZBA will deliberate the request and decide the issues, or if majority so decide, we may postpone it to a future meeting. During the presentation of the petitioner or his or her representative, there may be questioning on behalf of the ZBA members. Again, I can limit the time period permitted for each person to speak, but I think tonight that won't be an issue at all. So, without further ado, with nothing further to... Any further questions? We'll turn it over to the petitioner to present his or her case. Mr. Parr?
Okay, well, basically, my customers, Mark, Haig, and family, wish to build a 32-by-36 accessory structure on their property, and the location that they've selected is about the only location that is possible for the building. Actually, we had located the building in an area that was conforming to the setbacks, and it was approved by this township. And upon further applications to the Health Department, they informed us that the reserve septic field was in the area that we wanted to locate the building. So we attempted to relocate the building, and it is impossible to get that building or basically any size structure within the area. And you can see where it is on these notes, and I believe it's on page...
You mean where the proposed building is?
We're proposing it now with being variance request.
Yes, we have...
It's on page 15.
Well, your page numbers are probably different than mine, but we do have just the record.
This is what it looks like? Yeah. It has highlighted.
Yes, we have that document, which... Yeah, among other things, we have a map showing where all parcels have been notified of this. We have an overhead shot of the area which shows the property lines. We have a Carlisle-Wardman report, which I assume you folks have had an opportunity with you.
Yes, we have.
Okay. They also have an overhead view showing the proposed location of the accessory structure, and we have the Washtenaw County parcel report showing the property lines as well, and where the buildings are located, as they currently exist, plus the drawing that you just referred to, showing the setback, the 50-foot setback lines and the side setback lines as well. So we have all that. And, Mr. Parr, may I just ask you to please identify, name your company, if it is a company, if not, whether you're acting just as a sole proprietorship?
It's a corporation, but, yeah.
What's the name of the corporation?
Burley Oak Builders.
Burley?
B-U-R-L-Y, oak, like the tree. Builders.
Thank you. Part of the reason we ask that is we have a conflict of interest procedural rule, and unless it's all on the record, we don't know for sure whether there is an existing conflict. And, but I see no one within the indication of any conflict. That is the reason why I ask that. So forgive me, I don't mean to pry, but I think it's appropriate. Go ahead, I didn't interrupt you.
Okay, so if we're all looking at this page, that'd be the one I'm referring to on here four. So you can see that there's an orange area that shows the reserve field that has now been approved by the Health Department. So the actual field, reserve field area was a different shape. It was basically that rectangle rotated clockwise 90 degrees, but they were willing to relocate the size and shape to accommodate us with a 25-foot setback, and that was their request. They said they would have no problem approving that with that configuration. So that's what that represents.
Okay. Yeah, the reserve area is noted on your map, as well as the primary field area, which is noted to be 40 by 40 feet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, and they also wanted a 10-foot buffer area between the reserve area and the building. So that's another line that's to the left of the orange rectangle, representing the reserve area. And then the blue represents the location of the building, the proposed location.
Okay.
So, the reason, that's particularly the reason why we're here, is for that. I guess we have to prove or point out why this is an exceptional and extraordinary circumstance based on other properties immediately in the area, which are really outweighing, 39 on this page, that your township representative did for us, actually.
That's from the Carlisle-Wardman report? The overhead view?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
The yellow area that shows where the building is is not accurate, but it's a good representation of the area.
Okay.
So the other one that we're referring to before is more accurate.
Okay.
So, we think that we have exceptional circumstances in this case because of about four reasons. Number one, it obviously can't go in front of the house. The other is the location of the septic field reserve area. The other is there is really no other possible location for that building. This is the only area, and we feel that the main circumstance that's preventing us from moving forward with a compliant location is the irregular shape of the property, the rear line, to be specific. So if you look at, there's another illustration that was provided by a member of the township who ever provided this agenda. It looks like this.
Yeah, that's the map showing the properties that received notification of the hearing.
So she's pointed out all the immediate properties on that cul-de-sac that are affected or within the area, and if you look at the shape of that property, you can see that the rear line is irregular compared to the rest of them. So we don't feel that this property affords the same liberties that apply to the other properties that exist in the immediate area or in the same district.
Well, they would still have to meet setback requirements of their own property.
Well, it's not relative to the ones that are there, and that's the question that needs to be satisfied.
May I ask, first of all, just a couple of questions? So we're completely understanding. There is a attached garage at that location.
Yeah.
Because the reason is, I ask that is because I did go over there and look, but I couldn't see the entrance to the garage. I assumed that it was where it was, but I couldn't tell for sure. Second of all, just a clarification, this property is lot two of the Downs PUD. PUD is a special, it's called a planned unit development, which is a special type of zoning, planned unit development, PUD. And that's lot two, is that correct? That's what it seems to suggest.
Yeah, I mean, that's based on what this shows. I can't say for sure, but...
Yeah, that's what the Carlisle-Wardman record does show.
It is lot two, according to it. Yeah.
All right, and do you have some other evidence you want to submit at this point?
The only thing I brought was an email from our HOA that approved-
You are Dr. Hook?
Haig.
Haig.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Why did I say Hook?
You said Haig earlier.
Well, that's because I have no memory, Mr. Shields.
I understand.
I'm sorry, you do have something you want to present?
I do, it's just an email from our HOA representative.
Can I see that, please? I'll read it into the record, if that's okay with everyone.
I printed out the entire chain, which goes back a long time, but the important email gives us approval is right here.
Okay. Let the record reflect that the applicant has presented a multi... Can I keep copying this?
No, of course not.
We're going to mark this as exhibit number one. I'm going to put this in my binder, and whoever is listening to this, make sure that exhibit number one is marked in my binder, is made part of the record. It is printed out from the email chain, which speaks for itself. I'll read into the record what the applicant does wish us to direct our attention to. It's an email dated September 21st, 2021, at 1:18 PM, from Rashmi, and I don't, I'm going to mess this up, is it Chu?
Yeah.
Okay, Rashmi Chu, to Mark Haig, and it reads, "Hi, Mark, sorry, we did discuss over email and agreed reasonable to proceed as long as your neighbors agree. Event, though, doesn't follow bylaws exactly. I meant to give you some type of official documentation on this, but I haven't had a minute to remember when I'm on my desk at home. Please take this as an okay to proceed from an HOA standpoint in the interim. Best RC and sign, Rashmi Chu, MD, Associate Division Chief of Clinical Services, Division of Hematology, Oncology, at the UFL." He's got a lot of jobs. He's got a couple other titles, too. All right, if anyone would like to see this before we proceed, I'll pass it around. The HOA issue is not for us to decide, unless I'm all on that, I don't think I am. So, I appreciate that, however, any HOA issue is not ours to resolve. Okay, anything else you'd like to submit at this point?
No other records, no.
Okay. Let's see if any other questions from the zoning board. Mr. Walsh, do you have any questions?
Of the applicant? Could you contact the property owner that owns that little jot behind you to get their perspective on your... Because they're off on West Delhi.
Right.
Judging from the setbacks, 50 feet, and I think the page we showed that had the accurate location of the reserve field, that chunk by you is 114 feet, I think, wide, which means it's basically not buildable.
Yeah, it's a little odd, yeah.
What was their perspective? Because at the moment, as the property owner of that chunk where you're getting the setback relief, I'm just wondering what they say and what their perspective is.
Yeah, that's a good... Or any of the other neighbors.
Sure. Well, yeah, for that neighbor directly to the west, I believe, we didn't contact them. They're not, I don't know who they are, they're not part of our neighborhood. So I didn't ask them specifically about this, but when we first moved to this property, which was about seven years ago, we had written them a letter and put it in their mailbox, asking if we could purchase that land, just that little chunk of land, because they don't do, you know, they don't use it, there's not much you can do with it, and we could, since it's right in our backyard, you know, with the kids playing back there and stuff. We didn't hear anything from them, they didn't respond one way or the other. So that was sort of our attempt to communicate with them, that we sort of wanted that, but we didn't communicate with them about this specific question. We did talk to our neighbors to the north and to the south about the proposed structure, and kind of explained where it was going to be, what the architecture was going to be like, that it was going to match our house, it was going to be one-story, the basic size, and it's been staked out there. I don't know if you were able to see that, but it's been staked out there for quite some time, and the neighbors directly who are affected to the north and the south approved, you know, our plan.
Do we have anything in writing from them?
Nothing in writing. No, and just to be clear, I was at the property this afternoon, saw the ice rink.
Okay.
Looked at it. There's definite constraints about where a building the size could be built. Could you tell where the proposed structure is going to be? Okay. It had the rope around? It did, yeah, exactly, yeah. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Shields, do you have any questions?
If you adjusted the size of the building, would it be possible to move it to another site?
Adjusted the size?
It is smaller.
Smaller. Well, we've talked about keeping it at that site and making it smaller to conform, and that there's nothing really that could fit at that particular site. The remainder of the yard, I think, is not ideal for any size of structure, and really the main thing is that we have that retention pond in the front, and basically the rest of the yard, except for that south side of our driveway, is sloped in such a way that it brings water into the pond. And so even in the back part of our house, on the north side of our property, that part of the backyard is sloped down to bring water around the house, and we have kind of, we have some water retention drainage issues back there to begin with, that we've tried to deal with the best we can, but all the property kind of to the west drains right around the back of our house down there, and could a building go there? I'm not sure, but my assumption is that it's going to cause significant problems because of the slopes and drainage, even if it was a smaller building.
That question's not relevant either? Doesn't make sense to think about moving the septic tank, does it?
The septic field?
You mean the septic field, right, the reserve tank. Could that be moved into the slope?
We explored that a little bit, whether it could be moved into the front yard, and it probably is possible, but it would be a lot of work, from my understanding. Richard, can you comment?
Well, it's not an approved area by the Health Department. This is the only one. We did ask them that, and they said it's possible, but you'd have to get an excavator out there and start digging up the ground, the front yard, go like 40 feet deep to find sand. So they didn't feel that it was a relevant location.
Well, is there anything in writing from the Health Department says that's the only location for the surplus?
No.
Okay.
You can dig up the yard and try to find another perk, but...
Or engineer it.
That seems to like a kind of an exceptional circumstance.
Do you remember who you spoke with over there? Do you remember who you spoke with there?
I could probably dig it out of there, but it's the guy in head of the Health Department right next door. I don't know his name, but if we...
Trying to contact someone next door is probably...
Yeah, it's difficult.
Mr. Shields, any other questions?
Are there any other neighbors that have similar setbacks?
Similar setbacks?
Similar setback issues where they've gotten variance or...
You know, I'm not sure. There was a neighbor on, it looks like, I believe, lot six, who recently built a structure on his property. I don't know the details of whether he needed a variance there. I don't know the details of whether he needed a variance there or not. But in general, there aren't too many structures like this in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Shields, did you visit the...
I did, yes.
Could you state that on the record?
Yes.
And any figure that you saw, and any conversations which you had?
I visited it last Saturday, had no conversations, and was... Oh, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ramey, do you have any questions?
Is it possible to enlarge the garage to meet any of these needs for storage or other accessory uses?
Well, that's a good question. That's one thing that we haven't really discussed or explored.
Well, if you look at the configuration of the house and the current drain field, and any type of expansion project for the garage would have to go to the south, and the driveway's in the way. If the driveway could be relocated, it would have to go into the current septic field area anyway. So I think the answer to that is no.
Well, that's based upon just our discussion here today?
I'm sorry.
That's not an option that we really discussed or talked about, no.
I'm sorry I interrupted, Ms. Ramey, but go ahead.
I don't have any other questions. I did visit the property a couple days ago, just drove by and took a look at it.
No discussions?
I didn't talk to anyone, no.
Oh, thank you. All right, Ms. Culberson?
I did visit the site and drove up in the driveway and saw the ice rink and the staked-out area, so thank you first. It's nice to have something staked out so you can see it visually, so thank you.
I spent a lot of time out there measuring and re-measuring and staking and restaking, so I appreciate that you were able to see that.
So it was worthwhile, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
So, okay, so in your discussion with the Health Department, it was, it really is, you have to go through the investigations to find another place for that reserve field, but it is, it could be possible to find another place. Did you look at minimizing the setback request by shifting it at all? I think it'd be to the north of the field, north of the dump?
What do you mean minimizing the setback?
Well, it, you know, we're asking, I mean minimizing the encroachment on the setback. You know, because you're, you know, did you explore, even though there were, you know, some configuration issues, was this the least impact that you could find? Kind of explore, you know, explain more of how you landed here as opposed to trying to minimize the impact on the rear setback at all.
So, this area is, I think, really at least, my first thought of where a building like this would be best suited for, and so that's kind of where we've concentrated all of our planning and replanning. The size of the building is, you know, it's, it's, I don't know by your standpoint whether this is a big building or a small building, but it's kind of, we've already made it smaller than kind of the original idea to fit in here. And if you look at, that is really the only area that's flat that we can build on in our lot. And I think this spot particularly is what will minimize the impact on our neighbors the most as far as sightlines and disrupting kind of the building from their standpoint. It's really off, to our neighbors to the south, it's protected by big tall spruce trees, and so they really won't be looking at it too much. If we did, let's say the septic field wasn't, and the reserve field wasn't an issue, if we did go by the 50-foot setback and built it there, with the way our lot line slopes in towards our house, it would really be making the structure a lot closer to our neighbor's house than it otherwise would have to be. And so if the goal of these setbacks is to make sure you're not building on top of your neighbors, the 50-foot setback really makes, is counterproductive for that purpose. Because it really would end up between our house and our neighbor's house, and I think be a lot closer to their property. And that's solely based on kind of the irregular cut-in of the lot line in the back. Our neighbors to the north, it's kind of a strange setup for their house. The back of their house actually faces the side of our house. So our backyard is kind of their backyard as well. And so having this building kind of on the far southern corner, southwest corner, I think will impact them as little as possible as well. As far as, you know, looking for other areas on our property to put the building, it really comes down to the slopes and the drainage issue. This area is kind of the high point on our property, and should be impacted by that the least. And I think the other areas that are, you know, would still conform to the setbacks, even if we were looking at the, I guess, northwest corner, with the setbacks there, we would run into, I think, significant drainage issues. Because that's, that area, that corner is kind of all sloped, and there's often standing water back there that's kind of on its way down around into the pond. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that was kind of our thought process with the planning.
Can you talk a little bit about how you, you know, the purpose of the building, how you arrived at that size or a larger size, and kind of talk a little bit more about that?
Right, well, you know, it's mainly going to be for storage. And the things that we need to store mainly include equipment, yard equipment. We've got our two kids here, and then our third one, our oldest, is at home. So they all have bikes, we have bikes, they have scooters. We have a, you know, small motorized car for the kids. We have a canoe that we use in the pond that we generally like to store in the wintertime. We have that ice rink that you saw, that takes up quite a bit of space. And currently, we don't have a lawnmower. We'd like to get a lawnmower or a lawn tractor, and it doesn't fit in our current garage. We also have a space in this garage that we turned in from a storage area to a little art studio for Karen, and so that takes up some space, too. So it's mainly for storing kind of items for the kids and yard equipment mainly.
And the issue of building on the slope is, is not so much it's not buildable as much as it's just an additional foundation expense? Is that, or are there some other issues with the reason why you wouldn't want to build on the slope?
Yeah, no, I would agree with that.
Well, it's going to disrupt the natural flow of the water around the house.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would, you have any idea how, when these lots were designed, how that little parcel got carved out?
No idea. I was hoping that you might be able to give us some information on that. I have no information at all, and it is, as Mr. Walsh pointed out, kind of odd. I don't, I don't know what...
The approval on this was April 15th, 1997.
Gotcha, so.
Well before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No doubt, Ms. Culberson sits on the Plan Commission currently, and I don't think she was back then, but...
I can think of one reason, as a deer hunter, it's a very unique spot where deer hunting, so that could be why they wanted it.
You wouldn't be able to shoot a, I don't even care if it's a, you know...
Well, the question was, why would it be shaped that way?
Yeah.
A deer hunter probably wanted it that way.
Well, the same, yeah, the same thing had occurred to me, but you can't, you're not going to go hunting back there. It's too dangerous, so.
Well, not now, but back in 1997, it would help.
Well, that's when they set up the PUD, though. And I don't think they, that's part of the PUD.
No.
Just an offering.
Well, this is all hypothetical.
Yeah, actually, actually, I did ask Laura the question about whether that property was part of the open space requirement for the PUD, and it is not. So it wasn't included in the PUD and so forth. So it doesn't really have that, it doesn't have any connection.
Yeah, purchasing that parcel would take care of your problem with, it seems to me at least.
Well, even if, even if they had a parcel that was cut from one corner to the next, and it was a straight line back there, we wouldn't really need this at all. I think that's the, that's it. I wish that was ours, and it would be an easy fix, but here we are. Exactly, yeah.
In any event, I think you pretty much answered the questions that I had. I did, I'm sorry, will you finish?
I am done, thank you.
I did want to ask about the purpose of the building, I think you've explained that. Is that a one-story building or a two-story building?
It's one-story. And we initially had planned a loft up above, but took that out due to costs and other considerations. So I think we looked at the height, it's going to be about 20 feet high as tallest point.
Do you want to see the building?
No, I don't need to see it, I don't, I don't think we need to see it.
We want it to look like the house, is basically what we're going to do.
That's a very nice area back then, I'm sure you wanted to do, especially as far as these things. To me, that's not an issue. I don't know whether it would be an issue to anyone else, but... In any event, I think you have answered most of my questions. I did bother a little bit last week, and I guess I see, I see what you're asking for. And I really don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Do you have anything more you wish to add of any sort of evidence?
No, no, I think we stayed at our pace.
Okay. At this point, then, I would solicit a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there anything?
Pardon?
Is there anyone online?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. You know, I do that every time, and thank you for reminding me, yes.
My job.
You do a good job. Are there any members of the public who support the petitioner who would like to speak at this time? Anybody with their hand raised?
No hands raised.
Any indication? Is there anybody new added on?
One person.
Has been admitted?
Yes, that was some time ago.
Okay, good. Are there any members of the public who oppose the petitioner who wish to speak? Same question, anything else?
No, no raises.
No hands raised?
I move to close the public. Part of the...
Public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to close public hearing, is there support?
Support.
Moved by Mr. Walsh, supported by Ms. Culberson to close the public hearing. Please call the roll. Yes, Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes, Shields?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed.
7:45.
The ZBA will now deliberate their request. My, my concern personally on this one is that the setbacks were established when the PUD was initially approved. And I'm trying, I struggle with the idea of a couple of things. I don't see that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to this property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same district. I don't think that's really a big deal. I don't see that as being a real issue. I do have a problem with whether it's necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property, right, possessed by other property in the same zone vicinity. Although I didn't, I haven't actually looked around in the entire PUD to see whether there's any other accessory buildings which have been built, but I didn't notice any. But I guess more importantly, when there is an existing garage attached to the house, isn't really a substantial property, right, to have a detached garage, so to speak, or another building used for storage? And that concerns me quite a bit. And the question always exists in something like this as to whether, granting the variance would be materially injurious to the property in the PUD, other than this property. And we're not talking about the existing persons necessarily, because Appicutt has already indicated that in discussions with its neighbors, it doesn't seem to be an issue. But I'm really reluctant to grant that, particularly in a planned unit development, where all of this has been, you know, hopefully meticulously identified and discussed at the time of the Plan Commission. And like all of the ones we've seen recently of the same nature, the question arises as to whether the requested variance is the result of the actions of the Appicutt in seeking a building of this size. The question always becomes, can you make a smaller structure instead of a 32-by-36-foot building? And I think the answer is yes, from the drawings we have here, it would be reduced, certainly. The question then becomes, why a 32-by-36-foot building as opposed to a much lesser building, particularly when the Appicutt is indicating that it's mostly for storage? And that's, that's taken into account that the county is requiring now reserve septic fields, which has come up on other matters as well. Even taking that into account, the question becomes, do you still have a right to build something of this size on a property? And the only way it's going to fit is to get setbacks waived. And I have concern about that. That's my overall analysis. I solicit anybody else's comments on that.
I have, I have a couple of points, and I think, I think there are some, if you look at the property, that there are some exceptional circumstances. I do feel like when you look at the drainage, that this property has the detention pond on it. I'm making an assumption, but when you have PUDs, you do have stormwater detention, so it's the only...
It's been referred to as a pond and...
Yeah, for stormwater purposes.
Exactly. I would suspect in that case, it's probably stormwater.
Yeah, and so that is definitely something that is not happening on other pieces of property in that PUD. The other piece is, it is pretty clear with the topography that the drainage is coming from the west and into that pond. So, you know, unfortunately, this house and any extension of the house, it acts like a dam. So there is a drainage issue, especially with it being so close to that pond. You know, when you lay out ponds, you put them in the low point, right? And I do think, looking at it, even though, you know, they were aware of it when they bought the property, that irregular property line, it certainly is not something that you find in most pieces of property, even high-stated properties. It does, it does make it. I think you're, one of your strongest arguments about the least impact on the neighbors is, you know, I think you've done a good job trying to minimize the impact on the neighbors, especially with the orientation of the houses, et cetera. The issues that I have are that we don't have a clear, you know, we don't have an issue with this from the neighbors. And even the email from the Homeowners Association, you know, wanted you to reach out to the neighbors and get their approval. And so I guess I'm, I'd like to hear some other comments on it. So I see, you know, we can make the case for, in my mind, you can make the case for exceptional... In my mind, you can make the case for exceptional circumstances. I don't know if some of the other arguments for, you know, the other... You know, it doesn't affect the master plan. And I don't...
No, I agree it doesn't. I don't think anyone here...
Yeah. So it's really... I don't necessarily think it's, you know, needed for the preservation and enjoyment. I mean, but I do buy the exceptional circumstances based on those items.
Well, the only issue... Well, let's go around a little bit.
Yes.
Because I do have one thing we should talk about.
Okay.
Mr. Shields, do you have any comments?
My comments would be agree with both of you. The exception circumstances. I have several other questions, but we started talking about the drainage issues. Those dropped by the wayside. That is exceptional. But I think we've been very clear that large accessory units are not a substantial property right. And that's kind of where my decision would rest.
Ms. Ramey?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. One is, I mean, this all gets to the question of necessity. And I think that I echo what Mr. Shields is saying, that it may be desirable to have a building like that. Is it necessary for the enjoyment of the property? I can't really say that it is. And I think that's consistent with what we've been deciding when other people come and ask for this kind of thing. My real concern here especially is that as a PUD, this whole development was approved specifically and expressly contingent on a very complete set of setbacks. And if you look at the record, I mean, they've defined setbacks for all kinds throughout this PUD and a buffer area along the road. It was all very carefully planned with these setbacks and the open space preservation in mind. And I don't see that there's anything here that gives us authority to go against that just because the most convenient place to put what might be a very nice building is violating the setbacks. I just... I don't really see that we have grounds to go against what the PUD said. I also think that the options haven't been exhausted. If it's possible to buy that parcel of land to cure the problem, that might be something to explore. Doing some perp tests elsewhere on the property and having an expansion property elsewhere seems to be certainly less convenient, but possible. And given those possibilities, I don't know that we really have the authority to just do away with the setback requirement here that would otherwise be imposed.
It was good to learn that the reserve field has a 10-foot buffer requirement. Because when you look at the 50 feet and the 10-foot, that corner of the property where they're proposing, without relief, is pretty much impossible to put a building of almost any size. And then when you look up to the north and you look at the lines on this that show the 50-foot from the irregular property line, and then can imagine they show a 30-foot setback from the other property, but if you imagine the 20-foot, which is what the PUD requires, you really only have one potential spot in the property for a building of this size.
That may be... Yeah, you may be right on that.
And you do get into the drainage issues. In looking at the neighborhood, and I've been around the neighborhood a lot, the only other building that I can think of in either Walter's Way or Little Down is the new structure built. It would be on property number six. And since they didn't come to us and it was built recently, it must be within the setback requirements, or else someone did a huge violation because it's a substantial structure. But again, I'm getting back to what you all are, which is a outbuilding a substantial property right. And given our past discussions, not that any of these are precedent-setting, but for consistency, the last three meetings we've said no.
And you're right, we have. Going back to something I heard you say, Ms. Culberson, just... And this crops up each time, but we all should be aware of this, not only for this application, but for others that might come in front of us. The question becomes, when you do have an irregularly shaped property and for other drainage problems, for slope problems, for close to the driveway issues, all of this and the size of the building itself is all dependent upon whether you can fit it into the setbacks. And if you can't do it, then you're going to have to have a real exceptional need for it, in my book. And perhaps I'm being oversimplistic here, but I really think that what's being requested, which definitely it's not by any means unreasonable, but the problem is that sometimes you have a piece of property, you just can't do your desired building on it because it ain't going to fit. And perhaps that's the easiest way to say it. So when you were saying that you do understand, for example, the property line problems, you have the slope problems, you have the septic field problem... Well, yeah. And on another piece of property in someplace else, you're going to have the same sort of issues. So the question becomes, why should that be allowed if you can't fit it in? Just... Maybe that's an oversimplistic...
But in this case, the one thing we have to consider is the infringement piece belonging... If you look at the Loschna County, belonging to H-08-11-300-027.
The one to the north?
Well, no, due to the west.
Or the west, I'm sorry.
It's not a buildable lot. The buildable lot is H-08-11-300-001. So you're not really infringing on someone else's right because you can't... It's just vacant.
Well, you're...
Unless they sell it to the other lot and they want to build closer, you're not really infringing. And for me, that gets into the complication of, are we infringing on someone else even in the future?
Well, that's always the issue.
Yeah. And that irregular shape part of that lot off of West Delhi makes us more... Makes us less simple than some of the other ones have been.
Well, we still have the setback, the side setback, which is still a problem. It's not the setback in the direction of the irregularly shaped keyhole type lot, so...
I think it's just...
Well...
Just a...
It's only...
It's only for the rear.
It's only for the rear. The side setback means that 20 feet.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's only the rear?
Oh, it is only for the rear, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why this one isn't as clear-cut as some of the others. But as I think we've stated, it still comes down to, it was set up for a reason. We've been consistent in how we've handled these last few meetings.
Yep, I agree.
I think, you know, that's the issue. I think there is some... I still think there is the practical difficulty. There are some issues with this that are, especially a large part of the parcel being the retention pond. So I think there are some... I think you can't say there are not.
Well, I don't think it's reasonable to build it up there in front of the house anyway.
Right. And that, you know, so I... But the stumbling blocks for me are, it's not a substantial property right. I don't think that... And is it... It's not a substantial injustice in that all the options haven't been exhausted. There are limited, but some options. So that's where I'm kind of...
Anybody else? Ms. Ramey and Mr. Shields, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Culberson, anything more that comes to mind? Okay, then I'll solicit a motion.
I move that the proposed variance be rejected.
But that ain't good enough, Mr. Shields.
Okay. In the matter, the variance, number 21008, Hague rear yard setback variance, 2835 Walter's Way for a 25-foot... 25 rear yard setback rather than required 50-yard setback, in accordance with the approved final PUD site plan of the Downs residential PUD development to allow construction of a 32-foot by 36-foot accessory structure. Requested variance should not be granted due to the following facts. There are some exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property that do not apply generally to other properties. The topography of the subject parcel, existence location, and excessive slopes, the location of reserve test septic tanks, irregular shape...
Septic field, you mean?
Septic field, I'm sorry. Right. The irregular shape of the rear property line, and the drainage issues caused by the excessive slopes. Okay, let's see. All right. That such variance is not necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right possessed by other properties in the same zone or vicinity. A 32-foot by 36-foot accessory building is not a necessary or substantial property right. The granting of such variance or modification will be materially detrimental to the public where for welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in such zone or district in which the property is located. And Downs PUD was expressly approved contingent upon these setbacks. This accessory building? No, skip that. The setbacks are in place to meet minimum standards to avoid encroaching into other The granting of such variance will not adversely affect the purpose or objectives of the master plan of the township absent exceptional circumstances which would otherwise result in a substantial injustice. The circumstances or conditions upon which the variance is based on do not result from the actions of the applicant or is predecessor entitled. If Rose accessory building has dimensions that do not fit the township's setback ordinance.
I would move to amend the motion for the last item, absent exceptional circumstances which would otherwise result in substantial injustice. The circumstances or conditions upon which the variance is based do result from the actions of the applicant because it is their desire to build the building.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think you put in the word "not."
Right.
But you meant the opposite.
Right.
Okay. There's been a motion made by Mr. Shields to deny the request for the variance for the reasons stated. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Ramey. A discussion on this? Okay. Then call the roll, Mr. Walsh. Yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields?
Yes.
Okay. We have denied the request for the variance. I think that you might be able to make it a smaller building and get it to fit. It may not be the size as you want. And as you've indicated before, if there's any way of purchasing that lot in the back, it would certainly make sense to probably alleviate everything. But as stated here on the record, we've been consistent in denying this type of request for the reasons stated. It's a beautiful home we got. It's a beautiful neighborhood. One of the best inside of town as far as I can see. Now, hope you enjoy it.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
That's what we're here for, not a problem. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Here's one. Let's use this. Number nine, old business. We've indicated none. Does anybody have any old business of any sort? Okay. Next item is minutes, the minutes of December 16, 2021, which are pending. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Not other than the ones you caught.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a couple of minor little things.
Yep.
Mr. Walsh, you're up. Can you see anything? Okay, Doug, you asked for a motion to approve minutes of 12/16/2021?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Ramey. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Mr. Shields. Call the roll, please. Hoth, yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is other business. Number one, election of officers. As you know, every January at the first meeting, we elect officers, including the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. I am not married to this post as chair, so... And I say this every time and I mean it. If somebody else wants to try it for a while, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, you tell me what you want to do.
I move to keep Mr. Hoth as chairman.
Well, what about you as secretary?
Well, we're going to chairman first. We can do this in stages or we can do it all at once?
Let's do it all at once. If that's the way it's going to be, then...
Keep Ms. Ramey as vice chair.
Ms. Ramey, you agree to do it again, don't you? You do a great job.
Do it again.
Vice chair.
Vice chair. Oh, yeah, sure.
Solicit a motion.
I'll keep doing this. So I'm willing to keep a secretary if everyone's happy that way.
Motion to keep the officers as stated.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Walsh, supported by Ms. Culberson. Call the roll.
One moment.
Hoth, yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields?
With enthusiasm, yes.
Okay. Motion carries. You're stuck again with us for another term. Other reports, including planning commission liaison update, is there anything, Ms. Culberson, that's of particular interest?
Yeah. One thing, we are trying to get some more applicants for the open... Jay Holland resigned at the end of the year. And we really are continuing to look for well-qualified applicants. So looking for some people that might have a civil engineering background, landscape architecture background, you know, could be a legal background, but, you know, people who would be...
Two million lawyers.
Yeah, two million lawyers. So if you know of anyone, and I know Shields did recommend someone, we contacted them and they're not quite ready. Their kids are still very active, so...
We're going to cultivate.
Yeah, we'll cultivate that one. So, yeah, we are looking for additional applicants. And there is an application on the website that people can simply... The other... The other thing is, we are, at our next meeting, Monday, we have a list of proposed zoning ordinance changes or additional ordinances that we'll be looking at.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Well, just let us know. Anything stands out?
One that is under discussion is EV charging, either readiness or actually requiring some is one of them. And some, the other ones are maybe looking at the tree, our tree ordinance and...
Tree removal ordinance, you mean?
Well, it's, right, it's whether we can design it to protect some of the larger, more substantial trees. And I'm just trying to think of, I think those are the kind of major newer ordinances. We'll see. We still need discussion among the planning commission members on the list, so I'll report back at our next meeting.
I have a question.
Yes?
Would we hear anything about the sign people?
No, I don't know what's going on with the variance. You're requiring about the variances sought by what we generally call billboards.
Right, sorry.
I have no idea. I really have no idea. The other issue, the other thing which hasn't come back is the...
Firehouse.
The fire inspection ordinance.
You know, I saw that, and they were, it looked like they were establishing another appeals process for it.
Well, they can do that if they want. Or one idea that was batted around in my presence at one point was simply, because I don't think the zoning board has jurisdiction. I know Diana and I've talked about it at one point. But I think that what they could do is just establish a fire inspection board of appeals, make all the ZBA members, members of that, and go from there.
It sounds like they're going to establish a separate authority, yeah.
All right, that's all I got as far as the agenda. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Solicitor motion to adjourn? So moved. Moved by Mr. Walsh, submitted by Ms. Culberson, all favorite, well, no, this is declared. Ah, yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Shields? At 8:15. Okay, stop recording?
Yes, here's the next one.
Oh, thank you. That's what I was looking for. Okay, we are finished. We're off the record. Dr. Hank, I'm sorry, you know, we had to turn you down. I hope we made clear on the record that we're trying to be consistent in our rulings, and others have come with the same sort of stuff.